Today's Wednesday, September the 14th. It's 10:00 AM. I call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. This is a sad but honorable week to keep in mind all the first responders and all the veterans coming into Constitution Week. We've got Constitution Week. Keep in mind all those that worked in public service. Let's honor them today in their efforts to keep our country safe and free. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation? Let's look at the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the loudest I've ever heard.
Very good. Very good. Consent and approval. Renetta.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have 49 exoneration listings for 14,004, 1942. No minutes to approve vouchers for General County, 507-793-78. Coal Severance, 13,00270. 911, 13,19183. Home confinement, 21975. Chestnut Ridge Park, 7,38085. Mason Dixon Park, 52430. Cessers Valuation, 4,063792. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, 77,52601. Purchasing Card Vouchers, General County, 37-2923937. General School, 10,00610. magistrate Court, $45.99. 911, 9,0093979. Chestnut Ridge Park, 87016. Mason Dixon Park, 14979. Cessers Valuation, 15138. For a voucher total of 683, 55092. We have no budget revisions. We have vacancies on the Mon County Planning Commission, MPO Citizens Advisory Committee, Crime Protection Board, and judiciary orders of September the 14th, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Do we have any introduction of new employees or personnel changes?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, now's the time for comments from the public. Anyone that has anything they'd like to say, they can stand, identify themselves, tell us your residency. You have three minutes. You have three minutes, Betty. Go ahead.
I'm Betty Wiley. I'm the president of Duckery Creek Watershed Association and a longtime volunteer at Mason Dixon Park. I understand you're going to be considering putting a log cabin at Mason Dixon Park as an office, and I want to give my full support for that. I've talked to other people too, and we think you'd be a great addition there. We definitely need an office, and log cabin fits right in.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Hearing none. I'll close that session. Thank you. Colleen June, Grants.
Hi.
Good morning.
I have a couple requests for reimbursements. I have the Click-It-Or-Ticket grant for $2,045.37. I have the DUI grant for $3,279.71. And I also have the alcohol transfer for $6,648.54. That's all I got to say.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, Colleen.
Thank you.
Glad to see you're feeling better.
Thanks.
I know you were under the weather a little bit. Okay. We're kind of early, but I don't think it's necessary. It's not like a public hearing where we have to be exactly on time. So we have Joan Gibson, Regent, Daughters of the American Revolution, proclamation for Constitution Week. Mrs. Gibson, you please.
This is a joint resolution with the three chapters in Morgantown. I'm Woodburn Chapter. This is Susan Arnold, the Regent of the Elizabeth Luddington Haggins, Colonel John Evans Chapter, and Rebecca Davis, Regent of the Colonel Sackland Morgan Chapter. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law and whereas September 17th, 2016, marks the 229th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it and whereas public law of 9/15 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we the members of the Montague County Commission by virtue of the authority vested in us do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties dated September 14th, 2016. Eldon A. Callen, President. Thomas C. Bloom, Commissioner. Edward A. Hawkins, Commissioner. Thank you.
Move a motion?
Move to endorse the proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you very much. It's so significant that we keep in mind where we come from and how we have to live our lives into the future for our children and grandchildren. Would you identify?
Yeah.
Why don't all of you stand for the camera? The camera's back there. Someday we're going to have it flipped, but just identify yourselves so that people out there can see.
This is Esther Starkey, and she is a member of the Elizabeth Luddington Haggins, Colonel John Evans Chapter.
And is this her husband?
Yes. It is. Had a classmate in high school.
We've got to identify him too.
I'm a Hoedor. I'm David Starkey.
Hoedor is husband of the mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I always try to keep in mind that people actually do watch this, that they actually know what's going on.
And when is it?
Many times people don't get to see anybody except the back of their head, so I try to keep that in mind.
And when do we ring the bells? At four o'clock on?
On Saturday.
Saturday. And you will be doing that down here. Is that correct?
Yes. And then this is taking charge.
Bring your own bell, right?
Right.
That's right. And today is the 202nd anniversary of Francis Scott Key penning the poem.
Oh, really?
James' First Fable, "Better."
Yeah, it's exceptional. I used to, when I taught leadership, I used to talk about the flag and the National Anthem. And I always referred to it as a prayer and a promise because that's what it is. It's a prayer for us to be as good and worthy as those that went before us and fought for us and believed for us and a promise that we will strive to be better. Not that we're perfect, but strive to get where our ideals hold us up. So I appreciate all your good work.
We do appreciate it because I believe firmly in history, and knowing what went on is very important. And to that end, this Friday, we'll have the Historical Society Dinner, and anybody who would like to attend, let me know. Okay?
Do members share?
I understand.
There you go.
I'm always looking for new members.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can stay if you want to, but most people leave. Nice seeing you. Take care. Okay. Next on agenda, Dr. Frank Duvano, Superintendent of Montague County Schools. Frank, you want to come forward, identify your people, and you've got the floor.
We brought some additional calendars. Great that you all needed some more. They are school calendars, so whoever in the public for the office, you'd like to have those. Let me introduce our board member, Ron Lyder, and our board president, Margaret Parsons. So Dr. Parsons, so, but thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak to you again. We certainly do appreciate it. I'm here to be able to ask the commission to support the school levy that's coming up on the election on November 8th. And I want to also commend Commissioner, President Callen. You have supported the levy as a commissioner, I know, the last several years. You've always asked us to include certain things as we look at, you know, the arts and music program, so certainly appreciate that. And Commissioner Hawkins, thank you for your support at the last meeting when we attended. I think you were very vocal to be able to say that this is important to the community and as well as Mr. Bloom. We certainly appreciate his expertise and his knowledge with that and his suggestions that we include a couple of different scenarios. We're already checking into the option of PEIA, being able to maybe, that being expensive to be paid, but we have to work out with some legal issues concerning the Affordable Care Act and just what we can and can't do. But we're asking the need for you as a commission to show the community that in fact this is something that's very important and very wise to be able to support a school levy and all the benefits, not only within the community, but obviously all the programs that it serves within the school. We also want to thank you for your support for the public-private partner. We understand that that's pretty much something that really needed to take place, and now it's moving forward. We certainly appreciate that. We also, you know, want to commend you that I know you're going to continue to monitor the need to pay for taxes for the, you know, private businesses, including, you know, for-profit apartments, but because I think as WVU moves along, the commission is going to be very strong in relationship to that. And I think President Callen, you mentioned that that was one of the first steps, and so you're going to continue to look for that.
Yes.
So with that, sir, I entertain any questions that you all may have. We tried to explain some things to you last time. We certainly listened to some of the comments that you all made, and hopefully that you all know you will support it as a commission, but you'll support it as individuals as well. So, all right. Thank you.
Do you have anything to say, Tom?
No, I'll just move that we support the school levy.
I happily second this.
And have some discussion.
And we have a motion in second. Discussion?
Yeah. I am personally glad to support the school levy, and I'm also glad, what I just heard you say, that I am strongly recommending that the next Board of Education meeting that they adopt a motion which would ensure all funds received above the threshold of the levy, the 100%, will be given to our frontline employees, the teachers and school personnel, to apply for the PIA costs. In this way, we are not only retaining our best and our finest teachers, but also making a statement that this board is transparent on where the extra funds will go, and our local community supports our teachers and school personnel. And with these extra funds given to every individual staff member, we send a strong message that our local levy will be used to supplement the low salaries and excessive costs due to the PEIA situation. And there should be an excess from what we see, excess of tens of thousands of dollars due to our projections in the next five years, and this would be a great way of having the board explain where this large excess of funds will be going. This will help the staff pay for the letter, which unfortunately, Dr. Duvano, you are the messenger, had to send out because of the PEIA increase, and you've sent out a letter on September 9th informing the teachers of the increase of a 12% premium for all PEIA members. I'm just confident that this is what our citizens would want with our local levy to fund and with all the excess money brought in above the calculated amount. I believe this will truly ensure a passage of the school levy.
Thank you. Commissioner Hawkins?
I believe fully that education is a key driver in our community. It's what makes people, it's what makes people want to come to this particular county and live in this particular area. So anything we can do to strengthen this program, I am in full support of.
President Callen, just a little bit of response. We are including a $1,000 across the board rights for everyone, service employees as well as professional in this levy when it does pass.
Great.
So because we do value that, and that way we don't have to look at someone whose salary is based on PEIA premium gets a lower amount versus somebody gets a higher amount, but it's certainly something certainly that we want to look at. And the letter that Commissioner Bloom refers to is something for statewide issue.
Right.
Because the budget was so approved so late, there was an additional charge, I think, of 12% to be able to compensate for the changes in PEIA, so hence we've had to send that letter out as well to all counties, to all their employees. So it's unfortunate. I certainly hate that.
Right.
And whatever we can do to help our, now, I can't tell you that we use the money as a recruiting tool. We told, because I'm giving my law to do that.
That's right.
But it certainly would be very helpful. There's no doubt about that.
I think it's a good idea to use it as a recruiting tool. I can say that.
Yes, you can, sir. Thank you.
And I'm sure your board will support you on that. As we've talked before, I have never not supported a school levy. Before I was a commissioner, I was out advocating for a school levy. It's my background, both as a veteran and in business, that it's essential that we have good quality schools, good education that brings out the workforce that we need. As everyone's aware, I'm heavily involved in the community economic and workforce development. I know working with businesses, almost unanimously, the first thing is, how's your schools? How's your schools? People don't, businesses don't want to move anyplace where they can't attract workers, good quality workers, because the good quality workers want good quality schools for their kids. So this levy, as I said last time, there's, I can't think of a reason whatsoever not to support this levy. It's so critical to the development of our students. We've got some 9,000 jobs. It's being projected by the Pittsburgh Economist that did the study on our Tiff that we put together over there with the Lynch family and all. We've got some 9,000 jobs, and I want our kids and our grandkids to get those jobs. And the only way they can is to have a good quality education. So I commend you. I commend the school board and you President Parsons for all your good work. And if you want me, oh, and by the way, I've got to mention this, I love you put the music and the art in there. Those are two things I was good at, so I like to see you support that. Anything I can do, I know you all are limited as we are on our levies. You are limited as what you can and cannot say. That restriction is not on us. I can, I will go out and speak anyplace you want. I'd be happy to go out and speak on behalf of the levy. So I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Dr. Duvano.
Thank you.
Okay. You all can stay too, but I know.
We're going to do what people do at our board meetings.
There you go. Thank you. We'll see you.
That's funny.
Bye, Barbara.
Yep. It's ongoing.
Okay. Anthony Jean Burney, Montague County, abandoned dilapidated property enforcement agency.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm looking for approval to move forward to a complaint stage on a property out on River Road. We've had problems since 2014 through three different owners.
Is that that sliding building?
I think so. But I got pictures, and what the NIV reset was 3816 for this group, and there's been no change before, 7556291, and so would like to have your permission and, I hope you guys could take a look at that.
Posted, yeah. Here we go. Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah.
I'm watching what this one.
Yeah. Well, 2014, there were the gentleman.
Three different owners?
Yes, and then a group bought it from the bank, and another group bought it from the bank, and each time they've done a little bit, but never completed the job.
Yeah.
This time they've just ignored us.
Move to go to complaint stage.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And on that other item, I talked to her again, and she said she'll have it done within a week, so.
I think it's supposed to be a good day, I think.
Oh, good. Good. Okay. Great. Thank you for your work. Okay. Correspondence? West Virginia Department of Transportation, approval for Highway Safety Grant.
It's been approved for, the Sheriff's Office has been approved for 1,400,000 from the Highway Safety Enforcement Project from Montague County. It's projects such as this are significant steps toward achieving our common goal of reducing traffic crashes, injuries, and fatalities statewide. That's from Pat Reed, Governor's Highway for Safety.
Any further correspondence? Okay. Any unfinished business? New business, consideration of requisition number two. West Virginia State ought to adhere to issue a warrant on the state treasurer from the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District subaccount and the Economic Opportunity Development District Fund.
We have received a notification from the treasurer's office that there is an excess of funds in that, excess of funds in that University Town Center subaccount. They have to maintain $100,000 in that account to keep the account open, so they're, right now, they're going to transfer $245,069.65 to United Bank towards the payment for the bonds.
Payment of the bonds.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Move to allow the transfer.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. To consider the approval of poll workers in precincts for the 2016 general election. Our clerk, Carrie, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, sir. We have received the Republican election official sheets from the Republican Executive Committee. We've received the Democratic election officials from the Democratic Committee, so we present those to you today. Any vacancies that are left from those or any of the election officials who declined to accept the appointment will be filled by the county clerk's office. I do have, we are using the same 41 precincts that we used in the primary election. It's at 29 different locations. The one modification, it wasn't really a change. At Westover, Precinct 71, we have used the, in the same building, we've used the City Hall location right off of Dupont Road. We are moving to the bottom of the building, to the Westover Senior Center. It's a much larger location, and we're actually going to be using them for an early voting location also. So we're using, all of them are the same address, same physical location. That's the only modification we are making. We did, we're successful in locating two additional sites for early voting. One will be at the Westover Senior Center I just mentioned, and an additional site will be for one week at the West Virginia University Alumni Center. We have been looking for, to work with the West Virginia University to have a presence somewhere in the downtown area that would be accommodating to faculty and staff, students. This particular location will attract employees from the, both of the hospitals and Mylan also. We were only able to be there for, from October the 31st through November the 4th, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM till 7:00 PM. We will run at the same hours we run our other sites. So we will have four, four locations open the full 10-day period. Mount near Mall, Mason Dixon Park, Pier Pont Landing, and the Westover Senior Center. And then we will have the fifth site open for one week at the Alumni Center. All five of these locations have been approved by both of the, both the Republican Executive Committee and the Democratic Executive Committee. And lastly, our election official pay rates for, we have not raised our poll worker pay rates for a significant number of years. We did reduce our number of election officials that we need when we made our consolidations earlier in the year. So I'm requesting that we increase our election day pay rate for our election officials to $150 and our training pay rate to $50. So that would make a total pay that a person would receive be $200. All of our other additional payments would remain the same for mileage and those kind of things. But we did do a survey of all counties and what they pay their election officials, and we were about in the middle range. There were a significant number of counties that paid their election officials more than what we did, so I feel that this is, this is a justified increase.
Can we do it all in one motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move that we approve the poll workers, the precincts, and the increase in pay in the two areas that, as mentioned.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? I would just add that I want to commend you. Carrie, you do one fantastic job. You have, you do that balance of protecting the taxpayers' money and providing access to the voters, so I wanted to add that as a comment. Thank you. A motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Consideration of the donation of a log cabin for Mason Dixon Historical Park. Okay. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes. I brought this and asked that this be placed on the agenda. We have the ability, by way of the levy, and that's one of the things that is to be well-paid for, is an office for Mason Dixon Park. It's the last park that doesn't have an office. What we did as a board previously at Camp Monthly was to take a donation of a log cabin and reconstruct it and use it for an office. The finished product, which actually you can view anytime by going to the camp, is really something to be proud of. I was contacted by a previous patient of mine who stated that she would be willing to donate a similar log cabin, it's exactly the same size, to be used to provide a good office for Mason Dixon Park. To that end, I did first view it myself, make sure that it was a sound structure. After that, then I asked our facilities person, Mr. Doyle, to please come and look at this project with me and evaluate it, because if it doesn't meet his approval, then obviously it's something that shouldn't be done. I don't think that he saw anything wrong with this structure, as did I. Lastly, then, we included another individual who was asked to give an estimate on dismantling, what it would cost to actually do this, and the person came back not with a dismantling, but with an estimate of $8,250 to actually move the cabin intact without, of course, the roof, because it will clear the lines. This would be enabling us to not have to do what we did at Camp Monthly, in other words, spend the amount of labor on it, but just simply place it on to a prepared pad. This, of course, would be the choice of, you know, of commission to decide to do this. Cost-wise, I think you would end up spending about the $40,000. I'm just guessing. Between making a pad, putting the trusses on, it might be a little bit less because you can discount the county labor force that wasn't able to be available for us to do it at Camp Monthly. So to that end, I would like that this be considered to be done.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I would like to make that as a motion, please. Yes.
I'll second it for discussion.
Yeah, there's a couple questions I have, and more, since we're in the midst of hiring a superintendent out there, I think it would be best that we would hold off and let the superintendent take a look at it and see if this meets the needs. My concern, of course, is it's great that we're getting a donation, but the donation, when I hear donation, is it's not going to cost us anything, and, you know, you're saying up to $40,000, and this right away sends a red flag after dealing with the Justice Center. And when we're going to take a building, especially like a log cabin, and, you know, and I went out there and took a picture and saw some things falling apart, and, you know, there's some dry rot there, and I don't know what we're going to put, what it's going to cost, whereas we have some other options where we could get a new building which would fit exactly the Red Barn and, you know, Whereas, we have some other options where we could get a new building which would fit exactly the Red Barn and, you know, get it built exactly out there for probably one-fourth the cost. So, I would like to hold off on this until after the superintendent is hired, then they take a look at it and they make a recommendation. It is and it isn't in the levy, I mean, it could cover under the levy and I'm glad because we wanted that, so I'm not, I agree. I mean, I would like to see the levy funds used for that, for whatever purpose, but I'd like to hold off until we, uh, talk with the new superintendent and have him look at it and see, does it meet, you know, the concerns, meet the needs out there. But also, my concern is what we're really getting ourselves into.
But, I agree with Betty. Log cabin is the look that we want. Uh, there's, there's some unanswered questions that, that needs to be addressed. One, um, is there a timeframe by which if we accept this donation, we, we, we are under an obligation, uh, to, to move it? Two, uh, we've got to be somehow separate the private tran- transaction from the government tra- the, the, the donation to the county. And, I've been think, I've been giving this a lot of thought, um, and trying to figure out how to do that. There's been so many situations in the past when, when you send county employees to work on private property that people get in trouble. So, I am, I tell you quite frankly, I am in favor of a log cabin, but I'm kinda, I kinda lean for the fact that I want it, unless there's a time limitation, that I wanted to have a superintendent. And I just, the different locations for it out there in Mason Dixon, I'm not happy with any of them. Now, once we get my board appointed out there and I sat and we analyzed the uses of that, then I'd feel more comfortable about where, where we locate it. So, that, of course, is another potential delay because I would also want the new superintendent's input with that board. So, uh, unle- unless there is, uh, which then puts a different light out of, I have to start running everything through my head again. Unless there's a, an absolutely essential need to do this today, I would like to try to address those, those questions. And we probably, given the fact that we would be entering on someone's private property and removing a structure, what their expectations are as to what it's going to look like, whether we ha- they expect us to improve the land underneath and, and any grading issue. I don't, I, I don't know all, I don't know all those specifics that, uh, that I would, I would want to address.
May I address some?
Uh, yes, I, I wanted to add one other thing. The, uh, I'm very excited about working with the Mason Dixon, uh, board. We've got a big, uh, year coming next year with the anniversary. You know, I know Betty is right on that committee with Paul, uh, Paul, right?
Pete.
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 Zapata.
Zapata, and I've had some communications with him. So, I find this is a very, very, uh, this decision, very integral part of what our overall view of Mason Dixon is going to be in the direction. So, yes, I, please address, uh, my concerns.
The property is being listed for sale now, okay? So, obviously, unless it were, um, listed with, if it were sold, it may be a different situation. Secondly, my feeling would be that, uh, I'm going to wear another hat right now as president of the Historical Society, which, again, meets on Friday. I feel that the donation should be made to the Historical Society, uh, which is a righteous 501(c). And, and they in turn then could bequeath this building to county commission and then, now, I can certainly agree with the other constraints as long as it's not looked at as a five-month delay. I think that we're interviewing today, uh, that if this project were revisited for a vote in two weeks, I think that there still would be within weather constraints of doing it and within the constraints of the sale pending on the property.
So, you would accept the motion to table for a period of two weeks?
Yes.
Want to make that motion because that was really your motion.
Sure, I'll move the table for.
I will second that.
Okay.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion pass. In the meantime, we can work out the details with the owner because we've really got to know what, what we're going to do. Because I don't, don't want to get at the, at the other end and he's in here saying, "We want this, we wanted this, I expected you to do this."
Right.
And, so, we'll, we'll work on that. Okay, any other new business? Uh, reports for elected officials, Carrie, you have anything further?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Reports of county commissioners, Tom?
Uh, just, um, that on Friday at 5:30, I'd like you to stop by, we're having that food drive for the Pantry Plus More program. Please, Connor, tell the editorial board, "Thank you, that was a great editorial, very positive." Um, we're getting a lot of community support and I do appreciate that. I mean, that, those are the kind of things that make a difference. I also want to say that I'm thrilled that I received several phone calls from both the Republican and Democrat candidates. And I said, "I would like to see if the two of them would come at the same time," and that's what I'm trying to do, just because hunger doesn't have a political party. And they agreed, so, and the community is, is, is all on board. And I just want to, I did want to thank you for everything that the Dominion Post has done to help us get this. And I'm looking forward to, uh, collecting a lot of food and funds for the community.
Thank you. See, I have got a number of things.
Yeah, I think you have something at 6:00 or 6:15, don't you, that day?
Uh, yeah, uh, but I, I will, uh, I will be there.
This Friday.
What's the date of that?
This Friday.
This Friday.
The 16th.
I'm sorry, the 16th.
16th at, uh,
5:30.
5:30 to, right.
And we have a large group, I mean, I believe we, we're hoping to have Cooper show up from Black Bears, I'm hoping the Mountaineers is going to show up. We have a lot of kids showing up from the school, it's just going to be a real community positive event. And even the parking authority blocked off spaces for us, so, so I appreciate that, too.
Since our last meeting, I'll just hit the highlights.
Me.
You forgot.
You want me to go?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure.
I was too anxious, I'm sorry.
I just didn't want to, I just didn't want to finish up.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you.
Uh, I did represent commission, uh, last Friday, that was at the Ag Dedica- Ag School Dedication, they're in a building. Got to commend WVU, uh, really for going forward, uh, agriculture is still very important in our state, uh, good testament to what they're doing. Then, attended Monday, the ribbon cutting at the Holly Lobby, uh, which is really going to be a great, it's a great store, folks, uh, you know. Like to invite all of you, uh, to join us Saturday, uh, that'll be at Osage Park.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to go to their street fair, uh, I think there's great people and the food is excellent, uh, and.
Best wings in town.
Yes, Wine and Jazz Festival is this weekend, as is the Morgantown Marathon, so please be careful, uh, you know, there's going to be some traffic constraints, uh, on Saturday and particularly Sunday morning. So, be aware of where the marathon's going, just look out for it. And lastly, this is kind of, I love baseball, there's going to be a traveling exhibit coming to WVU's Ericton, Eric's Alumni Center on Monday. It starts at 2:00 to 5:30 for opening day, and this is of the Negro League Baseball.
Oh, yes.
This is going to really, I mean, it's coming from Kansas City, from their Hall of Fame, and this is something that I'm really looking forward to seeing. Uh, this also includes Latin and other players and others, you know, but, you know, it's something that I think you will really enjoy. It continues through the 28th of October, so, no, not everybody has to rush over for opening day, but, uh, just to let the public know, now, sorry.
Thank you, no, 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 no apology, you were right, I, it shouldn't be the way it was. Last, uh, la- last week, um, we had our Region Six, I think last week I reported that, I was pointing out that Region Six, the local elected officials, I've been president of that board for four years now. We, we recognize the work of the, uh, the director and her assistants. Region Six Workforce Investment Board has been recognized by National Association Counties as a model region for unemployment. I don't, uh, as, as, as president, uh, it was quite an honor to recognize the staff. We are going to have in December on our annual meeting, a recognition of all the service people in this region, 13-county region that we cover. To recognize all the people that provide help for youth, uh, for dislocated workers, for, uh, retraining of, uh, of whole industries. So, so that will be in December and I'll be getting more information out of that, that, that was a trip to, uh, Braxton County, uh, down at Sutton. When I was down there, uh, I took a tour of their courthouse and they're moving forward and doing a lot of improvements to their courthouse. So, uh, I had the privilege to meet all the elected officials there, including, if you rec- uh, you recall Travis Malahan, uh, that works for WVU. His mother is a sister down there, getting ready to retire. And, uh, she asked me, uh, she asked me for, for my card, uh, and to, to keep an eye on her son and report to her. So, that was good. On Monday, uh, I had the privilege of, uh, representing the Development Authority and the, the county. The Development Authority, as, as everyone knows, is an agency of Montague County, uh, to, uh, we are, we are part owners of, uh, it's a public-private partnership. And I got to commend, uh, the commissioners who set that up, John Powes, Bob Bell, and Asil Kennedy. They set up a very unique model, and I had an opportunity to talk to Secretary Muniz, uh, as well as, uh, Senator Manchin and Congressman McKinley. But particularly Sec- Secretary Muniz was very, very interested in the model. And Longview, as the report was, uh, given, uh, can meet the 2028 standards, the new ones that everyone's talking about. They can meet 2028. They, they believe that with the new technologies that came out, that, uh, a coal-fired plant can meet the 2030. The biggest difficulty is the mistrust of the financial industry. They're so afraid to put money into anything that has C, as the secretary said, C-O-A-L. If it has C-O-A-L in it, they're, they're scared because they don't know what the next administration or the next group is going to do. However, uh, Secretary Muniz was very interested in the concept of, uh, adding the, uh, adding another coal-fired power plant set up because way you can do it, he, it, we should be exporting, uh, end products. We should be exporting electric rather than exporting coal. And, the way Longview set up with the dedicated coal coming right in on a conveyor belt, no trucks on the road, uh, a- and also the same pipeline distribution of the, the residue, there's so many things that could be done. Secretary Muniz wanted to talk to me about the, uh, the Development Authority and things we've done on the Development Authority. Longview's totally out of bankruptcy now, they're working at 100% capacity and they have the lowest megawatt hour, uh, of, of, uh, power in the country. Secretary Muniz says this is the only public-private, and I talked about the fact that, he asked, he asked me about it, I says, "Well, you know, I've sat down and talked with the Secretary of Transportation, the U.S. Secretary of Transportation. I've talked with the Assistant Secretary of Education, served on panels with Assistant Secretary of Labor." And I said, "There's one common factor, uh, or one common statement I hear for every one of them, which you'll appreciate, local skin in the game. What's your local skin in the game?" And, he, uh, he introduced me to his senior advisor, uh, David Foster, and asked me to put together a two or three people group to come to Washington, D.C. to talk about our, talk about these plans. So, if the, uh, commission, uh, is favorable
Yes.
with me put into that group.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, uh, I will, I will go and, and I'll, uh, talk to them. On Sunday, I attended the Community Coalition of Social Justice, there was about four things I wanted to go to. I could, and they were all like 2:00 or 2:30. I chose this one because it was building, uh, the, the title was "Building a Better Community." And I'm very much, as you know, as I've said earlier today, into the community econo- you gotta build a community. You gotta have a good, strong community, community-based, you gotta have recreation, you gotta have, you have a, gotta have a culture of success. Our country's suffering primarily, there's so much negativity and willingness of people to say anything to get their way, that, that it's at such a destructive culture. That's what this Community Coalition of Social Justice is focusing on, get that community, the community that everybody wants to live in, the community that's tired of ranting and ravings and, and, uh, attacking people and tearing everything down, to one-up building. And that's how you build the economic count, uh, Spelman of, uh, uh, former West, uh, director of the West Virginia Hub was the presenter, excellent, excellent, uh, speech and, and, and presentation. I had to tell him that it was right in line with the same NACO, National Association Counties forums that we have on community, economic, and workforce development. Can't have, you can't build a good, or you gotta build a big commu- good community before you can build, uh, economic development or workforce. And you gotta have economic development workforce to build a good community. So, it's a continual, uh, process and we've got to all keep working on it on a continual basis. On, uh, coming up, uh, on, on Friday, I've got, I've got three things really going on on Friday that's, uh, of, uh, significance. And, uh, that is, uh, I will be traveling to Pittsburgh, uh, with part of Development Authority and, um, members. They want to go look at some incubator spaces and business layout spaces that were, would relate, uh, to the overall development, uh, uh, plan for the community, but also for the Montgomery Ward Building. They, they, uh, there was a, a vote, uh, last Thursday by the Development Authority to come and meet with this, uh, commission to start talking about the different plans. They have some exceptional plans there, so, so that was passed and so they'll be calling you, Renetta, on setting that up. Interestingly enough, I'm going up there with them, but the Corps of Engineers have set a meeting on the locks at 12:00 on Friday. I'm going up at 7:30 with, uh, the group from the Development Authority. They're going to drop me off at Neville Island, I hope this works great, drop me off at Neville Island where I'll meet Barry Palais and Frank Gernasic. And we'll have our annual evaluation of the locks at the Corps of Engineers on Friday. So, that kind of worked out, uh, only have to drive up there once, go up with one group, come back with the other. Only have to drive up there once, go up with one group, come back with the other group. But the plan is, Tom, that I will be back for your food pantry.
Oh, okay. I said, "I got to be back for his food pantry."
And, and. For your Historical Society.
We'll all be present.
Yeah, well.
So, I'll be there, and that, that, one other thing that's coming up, I want to mention this, and then, then I'll mention it again, next week, on the 22nd of September, 22nd of September, the Granville Police Department, I've reported this before, has asked me to help lead the opioid heroin epidemic conference. Because of my work with the, the County Leadership Institute, they felt that I, it was important that we continue this adaptive problem, that's what it is. It's not like fixing a tire. It's an adaptive problem, that I will be leading that with Granville next Thursday. I wanted to mention it this, today, also, next Wednesday, so maybe that, that could be published. I'm sure, Connor, I'm sure you got that in your, you got the email or the, the invitation out on that, but it would be good to let people know that that, that that is coming up. Yes, that, at 9:00, 9:00 to 11:30. Okay? Yeah. And I've got three or four other meetings, but they're, they won't take any more time. I just wanted to hit the ones that, that needed to be covered. Okay, anything for, hearing none, I've motioned to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.